Amendment Bill twenty nineteen. Council is now in committee. To examine the employment amendment. Bill twenty nineteen, please refer to the script for details of the amendments. We informed you that we are going to conduct a joint debate of the clauses. I propose that the following stand part of the bill. Clauses one, two, four, the Secretary for Labor and Welfare. Will move amendment to amend clauses fourteen and sixteen. Mister Vincent Zheng will move an amendment to amend clause six. For details of the amendments, please refer to the script. Members can now conduct a joint debate on the various amendments. I'll first invite the secretary to speak, to be followed by Mister Vincent Zheng. But they need not move their amendments at this stage. When the debate comes to a close, we'll first vote on clauses with no amendments to stand part of the bill. And then we will proceed to the amendments. Secretary for Labor and Welfare. I will move amendments later to amend clauses thirteen and fourteen of the bill. First, I'd like to give you the background on why we have a cap for the additional MLP. Many economies use public money to fund the extra or to fund MLP. And the International Labour Organization is of the view that if employers have to fully bear the ML pay, then it would be a favorable factor for women employment. So we undertake to fully embrace, use public money to fully embrace the additional four weeks of MLP, to ensure reasonable use of public money now and to exclude extreme and exceptional cases. Now, and because some employment contracts provide for pay that are rather exceptional. So we should not use public money to cover these cases. So we propose that the cap be thirty-six thousand dollar, eighty, thirty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-two cases, which is equivalent to four-fifths of the wages of employee with a money wage of fifty thousand in four weeks. And employees with a monthly wage of fifty thousand or below account for about ninety-five percent of female employees in Hong Kong. Members have raised examples of other economists, let me quote a few. Singapore, in Singapore, the cap, the cap. Is a fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars, Hong Kong dollars roughly. In the UK, ninety percent for the first six weeks and starting from the seventh week onwards. The cap is six thousand Hong Kong dollars per week. Canada, the cap is thirteen thousand Hong Kong dollars. Now, we have considered the views of members and stakeholders in depth. And we're now going to move an amendment to raise the cap to eighteen thousand dollars. This is equivalent to four fifths of the wages of an employee with a money wage of a hundred thousand dollars. According to statistics in twenty eighteen, a number of employees are making eight hundred thousand dollars or less per month account for ninety-nine percent of all the female employees in Hong Kong. So we, while the cap is stipulated in the bill, the employer is not prohibited from paying a high amount to the employee under the contract of a point of employment. As regards the proposal to amend clause fourteen, because when the bill is passed, it would become an enactment in twenty twenty, so twenty nineteen. So this is just a consequential amendment and technical in nature. It doesn't include any substantive change to the bill. I urge members to support the CSA's of the administration. In relation to Mister Vincent Zheng's amendment, I have to falling to say Mister Zheng proposes to amend the way to amend the cap of additional MLP. Instead of a negative vetting, he would like it to be made by positive vetting. As we all know. If positive vetting is required, usually the procedure is more lengthy. And judging from recent experience, we don't know how long that is going to take. By means of negative vetting. Will allow the council to scrutinize the subsidy legislation and amend it when necessary. And the timeframe for completion is also more certain. Now, an additional four weeks of MLP will benefit employees. So I urge members to oppose Mister Vincent Zheng's amendment. If the amendment is passed, I will have no choice but to reluctantly consider removing or withdrawing the bill. Mister Vincent Zheng. I will move the amendment I set out in the script and sacrifice to members later. I intend to amend clause six, four. So that to amend the cap on the additional MLP can be done by means of positive vetting. Instead of what is suggested in the bill, that is by means of negative vetting. As said in the second reading debate speech, the proposal was made by Doctor Fernando Zheng with the support of the majority of members present at the panel. And it was decided that the chairman of the panel should move the CSA on behalf of the panel. Now, for sub lag by means of negative vetting, usually it can't affect when the time for scrutiny expires. As for positive vetting, it would take longer for the amendment to take effect. Thank you. Doctor Fernando Zheng. I was shocked to hear from the secretary that if Mister Vincent Zheng's amendment originally proposed by me gets passed, then the secretary would withdraw the whole bill. I think this is open extortion once again. And this is not the first time it has happened. The question is. About adjustment of the cap of additional MLP, whether the government should have all the say. And I think this is the crux of the matter. All right. If it is by means of negative vetting, the initiative has to come from the administration. Only the administration can control the whole process. If it is by means of positive vetting, there is the possibility that the council can make such a proposal. Of course, any proposal from the administration is subject to Article seventy-four of the Basic Law, which is an inherent constraint on the work of the legislature. But still, it is a mechanism that allows legal members to have some say. The reason why I have proposed that this amendment is. Judging from past record. The administration would not change. Enactments related to labor welfare for a long, long time. The government once withdrew an amendment related to this area. That is Employment Amendment Bill twenty seventeen on reinstatement, right of reinstatement on part of workers. So the amendment on reinstatement order was already in place, has already in place for seventeen years. Actually, when there was an amendment to that provision, it was already in existence for twenty years. The provision was about when there is a labor dispute between the employer and employee and the latter has been sacked illegally or unlawfully. And even if the court has handed down a reinstatement order, the consent of the employer is needed before that can take effect. So this is so biased towards the employer's side. It was an extremely unfair arrangement. It took seventeen years before an amendment was proposed. And if the employer doesn't agree, then he has to pay higher compensation. That's my proposal. And the government said if the amendment was passed, he would withdrew, he would withdraw. In fact, it started in twenty eighteen end. And it was not until the next year that the bill, another bill was reintroduced on reinstatement order. So if you wait for the government to amend a piece of legislation, you have to wait in terms of decades. For the bill I just mentioned, we waited for twenty years. Recently, we noted the case of Haobas overturned in Taipu, taking nineteen lives. And the court just handed down its judgment. Please come back to this item. Now, this is related to the compensation for victims of relatives in the fatal accident legislation. Now, the compensation amount has been in place for twenty-one years without any change. Doctor Fernando Zheng, I don't see how your remarks are relevant to the amendment. So please come back to the amendment. Well, the relevance is why I propose that the cap be amended by positive vetting instead of negative vetting. This is because the government would leave things as they are for more than twenty years. So when will be next time when the government will review this cap on MLP? My worry is, it's not going to do it in the coming twenty years. And that's why we want that it be put in the bill, that a cap be reviewed every year or at least on a biannual basis. And yet the government is reluctant to do so. It says that it will only review the cap on a need basis. And the proposal or the amendment from Doctor Helena Wong was refused. And my proposal here will allow legal to have some say. Although it is already greatly constrained, still it is better than relying on the government alone. So I use the fatal accident ordinance as example, as an example. Why was it changed after twenty-one years? Because Mister Ho Chi Phong proposed an amendment. So the government had no choice but to, well, work on it. So that is a lesson we've learned. The government will not do anything. It's not going to review things even after twenty years. So why should we have a piece of legislation that is totally in the hands of the government? Take the statutory minimum wages example, it was in the bill. It was in, it's in the ordinance that at least there should be a biannual review. So they conduct biannual reviews. So for the grassroots, they always have to wait two, four years. Their statutory minimum wages always lag behind the market. And that is why we have this amendment. So it's crystal clear, if we rely on the government, you can achieve nothing. Or rather, that this council have some say. Even though we're constrained by Article seventy-three, at least we can try to move an amendment. There is still some chance of achieving it. Depending on the ruling of the president and also the composition of this council. But if we can't even move an amendment, then we will never have a chance. We can only rely on the government unless the council is fully returned by direct elections. So the government will not care. So by means of what is in the law, we can provide checks and balances. We are, if we are given the power to raise something on behalf of the people, then we can do something. Of course, it would take longer for a piece of legislation to be passed. If it is by means of negative vetting. And of course, you can do it speedier. But how big is the difference? When it comes to the time required. Now, if we want to raise the cap for the additional MLP, what a government suddenly come out and propose to raise it? Now even for the disbursement system, it will take eighteen months for you to do it. So a difference of a few weeks is insignificant. If you wait for the government to review it, you can wait for twenty years. So my amendment seeks to allow some say on the part of the council. And the secretary is saying that this is far too low, far too slow. And if this amendment is passed, I will withdraw it. So it will not have this council, it will not allow this council to have any say. This is extortion. So if you want a little bit more power, I will, I will destroy the bill. So this is a policy meant to benefit the community. And someone in this council says that we want the opportunity to amend the cap of the additional MLP. And even that is not allowed. At first, in writing your view to my amendment, the wording was not that strong. It said, you said that it's just a technical thing. And then if the proposed legislation is to be approved by means of positive vetting, that it would take a little bit longer. It was rather mild. And now you say that you're going to withdraw the bill. This is not what is expected in civilized society. In fact, you are in control of the council already. The president is very, very conservative and favors the government. And then we also have Article seventy-four of the Basic Law to control our powers. So it is extremely difficult for a member's bill to be approved and passed. And yet you cannot tolerate this. So you say that this council should focus on livelihood issues. In fact, the government is watertight. It will only work on things when it is under extreme pressure by the community. And the administration talks about improving executive and legislature relations, and there should be more cooperation. And Mister Horace Zheng just now said that the government's amendment is to raise the cap to eighty thousand. And it was a good thing because this council succeeded in pressurizing the government. Well, my original proposal was to raise it to a hundred thousand. Now, at first, it was fifteen thousand, and now it's raised to eighty thousand. According to Mister Zheng, we've achieved something. Now for the council to really have some teeth, you should pass this amendment moved by Mister Vincent Zheng on our behalf. So that at least we can have some say. Otherwise, we are just a rubber stamp. If the prosestishment camp can unite and stand on the side of the people, well, this council has some power. If there is anything from the government not in the interests of Hong Kong, we just veto it. If it is in the interest of our people, we support it. When we hear the wishes of the people, we can move an amendment. Even the government disagrees, we have sufficient votes. And it has to take action after with enough votes to get past a proposal. And this is the spirit of separation of powers so that the government cannot have his own way, whatever. But the prosestishment members dare not do so. And the government has just threatened to withdraw the bill if the amendment is passed. Now, if my amendment is really passed, resulting in withdrawal of the bill by the council of the government, what will the people think? Will it blame this council? Because it wants to ask for reviewing or amending the cap when the community so wishes. And yet the government will not allow us this minimum power and is going to withdraw the bill. So that there will be no additional four weeks of ML. Who will the people blame? Who will the people claim scold? I think the answer is very clear. But I believe the prosestishment camp dare not oppose the government. They are just a rubber stamp. Anything the government says is always correct, they will support it. So we just surrender, we just give up, we just let it be. Four weeks is better than nothing, and we should not allow the thing to fall through. So this is how this council will perform. It will just give you something, something is better than nothing. Well, let's wait and see how the prosestishment camp is going to respond. Will they be on the side of grassroots workers, on the side of the administration?
Mister Ray Chen, my, originally I hadn't planned to speak during the CSA stage. And didn't think to speak on the amendment moved by Vincent Zheng as the chairman of the chairman of the Empire Panel. Well, because for the members' motion, we need to be voted separately. We definitely pass in both geographical and functional constituency. I didn't expect the secretary have uses as justification on such a likely issue, decide to turn the tables on Legco. Well, remember what the secretary said this morning. He claimed that if Mister Vincent Zheng's motion on behalf of the panel become passed, he won't rule out that he would withdraw the entire bill. That means that after so many months, it's as if nothing had happened. Well, do you have to be this aggressive, secretary? I expect you to object. Well, you should claim the objection that your flexibility will be reduced. And you can just blame it on the legal filibuster. And to add more uncertainty to this bill. Well, I probably want to argue with you in precise such grounds and tell to your views. Well, if the government support the members' bill, that it could have a ticket on board and become their own amendments. So why do we need to account to vote separately? What you said this morning. Well, he told the entire Hong Kong that if Mister Vincent Zheng's amendment is passed, he would consider withdrawing the entire bill. So let's take a look at what this amendment is all about. Just amend clause six, four. That deleting the commissioner may by produce published in the Gazette and substituting the legal made by resolution in the proposed section fourteen bracket eight to the effect of additional MLP amended by, let's go by resolution, i.e. positive acting procedure. Instead of by the lay commissioner of labor by notice published in the Gazette, i.e. the negative vetting as proposed in the bill. I presume the public may not know what it means by a negative or positive vetting. Most of the legislation will need to go through the first reading, the second reading. Then we may form a bills committee, then we return to the council to resume second reading. And with any amendments that were entered, the committee, the whole committee and go into the third reading and pass before it could be enacted. And for subsidiary legislation and for some special circumstances, we will go through the negative vetting. What do you mean by that the government proposed legislation that will let it take effect first? After it took effect, not that it not, could not open to amendment or repeal. The governments, the legal still have this power. Well, this power will be diminished compared to positive vetting and also under time constraints, which is twenty-eight days. That within twenty-eight days, they must return this council to complete the procedure to pass to amend or to veto the resolution. If it's a veto, it will not take effect or cease to take effect. But amended, it will adopt the amended version. I understand the government need to have this flexibility. In some circumstances, take the doubled stamp duty, that it must be negative vetting. If they propose this bill and let the council to deliver the bill, that there will be a lot of confusion to the markets to such policies. But looking at this maternity leave amendment. So negative vetting versus positive vetting, what's the difference? Secretary just claimed that we go through the by positive vetting. What? That it would be uncertain that when did latest proposal will pass. Well, he is correct, well, even if this happened, so what would push the government to withdraw the bill when there is no objection during the second reading? So how would obstruction would take to the government's governance? I didn't notice any of these. With government taking such an aggressive stance, where does it come from? Well, I suppose it will want to offer a stepping stone for the, for a slashman camp. For a logical point of view, where practical, of course, positive vetting will be the most ideal. Would the government to move any amendment, whether it take a one or two or ten weeks? If the legal agreed, reached consensus, they would able to pass through the scrutiny within a short period of time. Of course, the legal can also extend the scrutiny for another twenty-one days in a council, which there were total of forty-nine days to scrutinize these amendments. But often not able to do that, we have a huge backlog. Well, but while since it's a member's motion to extend scrutiny, that we're not able to get there, we have a lot of bill that failed to extend the scrutiny period. What to the bill itself, there really no material impact to the government policy. It would not let to confusion and chaos in the markets. And the government make the claim that if this amendment or positive acting amendment passed, they will consider withdrawing the bill. Offer a stepping to a perception camp, maybe these perception camp may speak up. Well, it's probably a veto as if nothing have happened. And you claimed, well, it becomes the Solomon, King Solomon dilemma. Have you decide to, for second, we lost nothing, but we shouldn't waste our past effort. Well, at the second last sitting, then we should just Well, at the second last sitting, then we should just object with reservations. Because you can't say that for Let's Go getting initiative is inappropriate, especially those in business sector. So you definitely support this amendment. I'm not speaking from the position, matter of class or whether it can help the pregnant women or mothers. For government proposes pro-labor policy, what to the capitalists and employers often have a lot of grumblings, maybe during filibuster. While for subsidiary legislation, there's no filibuster. With twenty-eight days, then total of forty-nine days, that it will automatically take effect. It's pointless to go filibuster at the subcommittee, or you have one chance to speak fifty minutes at the council. So why wouldn't the business sector supporting this amendment? So they can just go through positive vetting? If the business sector, even though there's not much logic in Prosestment Camp anyway, well, they don't really need to face the voters. Well, the voters will ask them, well, for their business point of view, why do you surrender completely to the government? Well, somebody have proposed a positive vetting. Now you let the government by way of negative vetting, and we can't change between forty-nine days, it will continue as is. We're not saying that being quick is a bad thing. Well, maybe for everything, the government should take the negative vetting for everything. Well, you probably appreciate everything put forth by the government is good. Well, the M P C S A interpretation is even quicker, you bypassing the whole Let's Go. It took effect before you can actually look at the provisions. Well, the moment you look at the provisions, it will take effect. But we couldn't do this at Let's Go. And when members tried to move an amendment, just to attack back to any residual rights. Well, it's really good thing the Let's Go will not get in the way and veto it. Was sometime it will ask for two and will propose one week, and at the end, people would vote for it anyway. But it will go through the whole deliberation. At least that there's some kind of wrangling that for negotiations or using public opinion, hoping to bring about changes. For positive vetting, vetting was difficult because you're operating under a time constraint. Thus, I appeal to Let's Go members, regardless of party lines to support this amendment. We'll see if the secretary and the Carrie Lam would dare on such an uncontroversial livelihood bill because of bypassing amendment, by positive vetting, by withdrawing the whole bill of the extra four weeks of maternity leave, have decided to draw the offer as if nothing had happened. So we want to see our own eyes that how aggressive this government have become. Have you supporting the government with self-surrendering your scrutiny rights? You gave government the ball. Well, they would check your facts first, they would give you some time to scrutinize it afterwards. Then you are self-emasculating. You're undermining your own right. Well, let's see if the government want to withdraw this bill. Well, I dare them not take to withdraw this bill. Well, a positive vetting doesn't really have no harm. It's probably not happening immediately in terms of this maternity leave disbursement. Well, if you decide to be gracious to edit, to go up, whether of more, those weeks, we're more than happy to oblige, we're not getting in the way. Well, we can happy to do a third and second reading right away if there's so uncontroversial and hardly anticipated. This is not the case, this is, things have to be so nasty. And even at this stage, you try to turn the tables. Well, you have counted enough votes, you just veto all the members amendment and move behind. And you want to protect, add a protection for the Prosestment Camp. Well, it's not that I'm reluctant, well, if you start to proceed, then everything will fall through.
The impact would be minimal. It won't lose you any votes. But if you always think about whether you will get more votes or lose votes, I think it is rather low level. You need to consider matters from the perspective of principle. You have to defend your right to scrutinize bills and the laws as a legislator. Well, if the request to have an annual review is set to have a charging effect, then that, then that is simply unreasonable. Of course, for some people, there is no urgency. You may not have a wife, you don't want any more children. Well, if you don't, if you, if you don't agree with others' amendment simply because it has nothing to do with you, and you said that it will incur additional government expenditure, then they're simply wrong. We're talking about taking the ball into our own court. We need to have bargaining power. Of course, I asked the loyalists not to emasculate themselves. Support your own amendment. Let's see if you have the courage to go ahead, to force the hand of the government, to see if they will actually withdraw the bill and to, and to take away the additional four weeks maternity leave from prospective mothers. This Selena Wong.
Chairman, I speak in support of the secretary's two amendment and the proposal first floated by Dr. Fernando Zheng. And the same proposal was endorsed by the panel and in the end, moved by the chairperson, Mr. Vincent Chang. Well, the secretary's amendment is to increase the cap of additional maternity leave pay in the new Schedule One A from thirty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars to eighty thousand dollars. This will benefit women for the additional maternity leave, especially those with a salary of over fifty thousand dollars. The original proposal was that the line is drawn at fifty thousand dollars salary and at eighty percent. We think that it is unfair for the middle class and or those making over fifty thousand dollars. It is an unfair treatment. Members from different political spectrum said that drawing the line at fifty thousand dollars was unreasonable. However, the secretary was insistent. He said that setting the cap at thirty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars would take care of ninety-five percent of female employees. He would not increase the cap. We didn't understand why they would leave out the five percent of employees. Now is the resumption of second reading debate. All of a sudden, the secretary proposed to change the cap significantly from thirty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars to eighty thousand dollars. So, with the increase, what is the percentage point of employees covered? Ninety-nine percent? The secretary said that he has listened to members' views. Therefore, he made the change. But who did he listen to? Why didn't he talk to us? We wonder why it's set at eighty thousand, one or ninety, or even a hundred thousand? Everything is done behind closed doors? I find it regrettable. Of course, we welcome the increase in the, in the cap. But I'd like to point out that during the scrutiny, similar to Dr. Fernando Zheng, I have made some suggestions to amend the bill, and they were accepted by the panel. I asked for a period of review in Schedule One A because it's absent. I proposed that there will be an annual review in relation to the cap. At that time, it was thirty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-two, now is eighty thousand dollars. The Commissioner for Labor, subordinate of the secretary, opposed to my amendment. I found that rather unreasonable because the reason was that, well, there will be additional financial expenditure, more manpower will have to be recruited to monitor the pay, the salary trend. So they rejected my amendment on the grounds of a charging effect. And my proposed amendment was rejected by the president. But in the same breath, they increased the cap from thirty-six thousand or so to eighty thousand, and there is no charging effect? So it's a case of do as I say, not as I do. I see a hegemony in the executive. There are loopholes in the bill. The secretary said that it will be reviewed in due course. I'm sure that you are using existing resources to conduct a review. I simply don't understand why, when it comes to an annual review, it would incur additional expenditure. And, and it won't when it's in due course. I finally understand. By in due course, it means once every ten or twenty years. Or it will be a different secretary. So there won't be additional expenditure. Then the whole bill is simply a scam. If by reviewing it in suitable times, it means it will never be reviewed. Hence, no additional expenditure. I'm sure that the cap will not be reviewed in this government or the next. Their arguments and their logic is simply unreasonable. The amendment first floated by Dr. Fernando Zheng and moved by the panel. It is an amendment about the way the law is going to be changed, whether it is to be done by positive vetting or negative vetting. Dr. Fernando Zheng's proposal is that it should be positive vetting. The difference is that if it is moved by the administration, then the ball is in the court of the executive when it comes to agenda setting. Dr. Fernando Zheng, now it is Mr. Vincent Chang's amendment, is, is that we will have control. If control is in the hand of the government, then they can easily leave it and never review it. The secretary said that negative vetting is a more speedy approach. Positive vetting may take a longer time. Indeed, negative vetting may be speedy. When the commissioner, as can, do it by notice. We have twenty-eight days, and we may extend it by twenty-one days. Then we have altogether forty-nine days. We have to get everything done in forty-nine days, otherwise we would not be able to move any amendments. And the law will the subsidiary legislation will come into effect. There has been many cases when we could not make the deadline of forty-nine days to move amendments. The formula milk ban is one case in point. There are cases when we cannot finish the scrutiny or move any amendments within forty-nine days. If we have positive vetting, we have control. We can move motions to, to make amendments. We can control when to do what. The Democratic Party will support Mr. Vincent Chang's amendment to amend clause six. We find it rather unpalatable that the secretary asked members not to support Mr. Vincent Chang's amendment. He said otherwise, he would withdraw the whole bill. And, well, it beats me as to why government officials under the leadership of Carrie Lam love to intimidate us. Whether it's logic wrong? They, he said that regardless of how many meetings we've had and how much consensus we have forged, if members support Mr. Chang's amendment, then he would withdraw the bill. Practically, he said, it's my way or the highway. I will support Mr. Chang's amendment. I want, I can't wait to see you withdraw the bill. Don't belittle the legislature. When Matthew Zheng, his current Chief Secretary, said in a matter of maternity leave, that if it's to change from three days to five days, he would withdraw the bill. After he said that, well, the D A B and the F T U started to back down and said, oh, we will have to take three days. And now, there is this additional maternity leave, it seems to be your usual tactic. And there's also Eric Zhang. He is the secretary for Constitutional Main Line Affairs. He criticized the preliminary voting, preliminary election. We say it is an internal coordination. You said it is election rigging. The liaison office has been controlling the election. Why did you not accuse them of rigging the election? This is ludicrous. Do you have any evidence that a preliminary election is a collusion with external forces? You don't have any evidence. You don't have any evidence, you better stop saying that. And you call yourself a secretary for Constitutional and Mainland Affairs, and it's not the only one. For the National Security Bill, no one came to explain clearly to the legal. We asked questions, they either did not answer, or they hum and haw. We asked whether this national security law would undermine the Bill of um Bill of Rights ordinance. They did not answer us. Ms. Wong, please come back to the point.
I am coming back to this point. The secretary just want to intimidate us. They impose draconian laws onto us. They try to rule my terror.
This is most outrageous. The D P must raise our strongest objection to such intimidation. So I appeal to the public to come out and take part in the preliminary elections of the pandems. This is not manipulation of elections, but rather an expression of the wish of the people. Secretary, I hope you can openly withdraw your remarks to condemn us. Withdraw, not not really a condemnation, but your intimidation, you threatened to withdraw the whole bill if we dare to support Mr. Vincent Zhang's amendment. You must withdraw such remarks and apologize to members. Mr. Jeremy Tam. Ms. Lee.
I think members from all political parties, whether you are from the opposition camp or pro-establishment camp, support the bill. We said that there should be sufficient time for dealing with the bill. And even uh the F C has approved the funding you required, and you need time to set up the system. So this bill is not controversial at all. The pandems have been fighting for longer M L, and I have moved similar motions at a pass. And out of the blue, you made such remarks, infuriating members here. So whether it should be by negative vetting or by positive vetting, what is the big difference? It will not affect the commencement of the bill. No matter this amendment is passed or not, this bill will come into effect. If the amendment is um vetoed, the bill will still receive its third reading. If the bill is, I mean, if the amendment is uh supported, then the bill will still receive its third reading. It will not delay the commencement of the bill. This amendment is about the procedures to amend it in the future. No one has called hot to your preparation. Now, if the secretary uh said that if this C S A is passed, then you will get nothing. You have to consider what is the nature of the amendment, is it really a big deal? Now, if um, let me exaggerate. I am amending uh the uh period of um uh additional M L P to ten more weeks, and uh this will have a major charging effect on the administration, and it would be understandable if you oppose to such an amendment. After all, this C S A is about how to amend the legislation in the future. I support this bill from day one. If the secretary, I may uh recall why we have had this definition of miscarriage and amended from uh twenty eight days to twenty four days. It was first raised by me, and I openly thanked the government for amending this definition. While this government has done all sorts of evils, but I it has at least done something good, including amending the definition of miscarriage here. This bill is supposed to be a desirable one with a support across the whole political spectrum. And then all of a sudden, when at the eleventh hour, you made such remarks. Well, oh, if you uh find the positive vetting procedure objectionable, but there are host of um ordinances that can be amended by positive vetting procedure. Now, if we talk about a sensitive matters such as um uh special damn duty to uh dump and the property market or uh things involving uh taxes, of course, we can understand why you want to pass uh the uh legislation by means of negative vetting. But with this, if the amendment on positive vetting is passed, it will not affect the commencement of this bill. In future, it may take a little bit longer for an amendment to be approved by the council, then you might want to start the preparation earlier. You may want to um introduce two more weeks of M L. You need only to start the whole legislative exercise earlier, come to this council earlier. Well, you have to go through the same procedures, you have to brief the panel and then introduce a bill here. And it's only about whether uh it will be twenty eight days or a little bit longer. By means of po- negative vetting, of course, it is administratively more inconvenient to you. But you have not promised to us how soon you will reveal the level of the pay. Now, for statutory minimum wage, if you carry out by annual uh reviews, that's fine, we don't have a problem. But what if this bill, once enacted, will not be amended? In the coming ten, twenty years, what can we do? Because the initiative rests with the government. Under the basic law, members uh a member bill has a very high threshold. We need the uh consent of the Chief Executive as well, because any bill is bound to have a charging effect or change on policy. Well, even if we uh raise the level of fine under fixed penalty ticket uh from two uh three hundred and twenty dollars to four hundred and twenty dollars, it is bound to have a charging effect. And I think it's clear to both you and I that is a, there is an extremely high threshold for us to initiate an amendment. So we only talk about the procedure. Even if this amendment is passed, what is the impact? Well, it may be a little bit uh more work for L W B. If you want to amend the uh ordinance, you have to start a preparation earlier. And I believe any amendment will uh make the terms more generous. I don't think you dare to cut the period of M L. Uh if you do so, uh you will uh be uh in a posi- in opposition to all pregnant women in Hong Kong. So even if you want to amend the bill, there, it is not controversial at most, so we want to uh make it more generous. Now, if we want to amend the bill and to change the additional M L to ten weeks, you can say that, well, that is impossible, you will withdraw the bill. I think the community would understand. It's not that they are irrational. And what is the big deal here? You said just now that if this C S A was passed, you would consider withdrawing the bill. I I'm not sure whether you said you would consider or you don't rule out removing or withdrawing the bill. I don't know whether such remarks were for the pro-establishment camp. Now, I've given you a tip. Now, if this amendment is passed, you could stand up and vote against it, and then they can blame the pandems uh for um aborting the bill, so and so forth. Are you going to stage a show? You may want to do it quickly. So far, no one from the pro-establishment camp has pressed the request to speak button. Usually, uh the chairman of the panel or the bills committee who moves an amendment. This time is Mr. Vincent Zhang, but I'm not um targeting at him. Usually, um member or the chairman of a B C who moves a C S A on behalf of the B C would uh spend another fifteen minutes to state his own position, but I didn't see him doing that. Perhaps he's going to speak later. Now, uh perhaps you don't want us to waste time, you just want to go through the motion. You can uh set up and say that I do this all for the good of the community. This bill has to be passed A S A P. These pandems are stirring trouble. But uh you have to bear in mind that the amendment uh was supported in the bills committee, so you have to bear in mind that the amendment did not just come from one or two pandems, but the majority of the committee. So you may start up and say that now you are uh trying, uh you're standing in opposition to all uh pregnant women. Perhaps uh this is already staged. From yesterday to now, almost some members who spoke were from the pro-establishment camp. They talked about no more filibustering, no more stalling, but then, well, I paid particular attention. Uh they uh draw on and on, the majority of the speakers were from the pro-establishment camp. So who is stalling? Or did they just want to use an opportunity to uh sh- to to um condemn the pandems? Of course, the elections are drawing near, and I know it's the time uh to make political gestures. But then, they were uh so eager to speak, as if they were eager to uh give blood in a blood donation exercise. I'm not going to spend all twelve uh fifteen minutes on this. When uh Ms. Claudia Mo has spoken, I hope that someone from the pro-establishment camp. Now, I saw Mr. Vincent Zhang holding a script. I think um get it over and uh be done with. And then, I I think this is the show you want to stage. Pro-establishment members can just stand up and uh scold us. And I said that we were, uh we're just trying to uh block the passage of the bill. Well, let them uh get it done and be over with. Ms. Claudia Mo.
I think we need to go all breathless over what the minister had to say earlier. I mean, it's no point to uh the take him quite so seriously. Either he's just bluffing, or uh there's some political sleaziness involved. As uh my honorable colleague, uh my pilot friend, Jeremy Tam, actually suggested. We're doing consideration over clauses one to fourteen plus amendments. Fine, I mean, uh that we can just talk about how to better our maternity leave, uh the arrangements and so on and so forth. But then the official, quite unexpectedly and unnecessarily, suddenly suggested that, oh, if you ever uh sort of dare to, he didn't say dare to, but that's the message, uh pass this uh uh the positive vetting uh business. Uh he will consider this consideration on his part, right? He will consider scrapping the entire bill. I was fairly taken aback by that particular statement. Why did he say that? Or why did he bother? As Mr. Tam made it so clear, it wouldn't affect what we are dealing with at hand. What's he trying to say? That he has complete, full, absolute authority over this uh entire session? And his king of the hill kind of attitude? It is utterly unnecessary. But then uh it's not going to pass, judging by the way he put it. He has put it this way. Those Beijing stooges just wouldn't dare to say no to the government, because the it is uh election time, right? They may be having some deals there. So if he's not bluffing, what's he uh going after? I fairly agree with what my other honorable colleague, Ray Chen, has suggested. Maybe the official is trying to uh create this Solomon's baby kind of scenario, which is the real mother, two women fighting over one baby. And King Solomon said, okay, uh I'll just divide the baby between the two of you and the real. There's another thing. There was supposed to be another amendment talking about how the government and when should the review of this new law after it's come into effect. The usual practice, I understand, is uh two years. After two years into implementation, we'll have a thorough official review. But then, no, they wouldn't do that, because they uh the declared that it would involve too much uh an unnecessary extra official spending. Oh, give me a break talking about spending. The amount of public money that's been spent on runaway costs on all those the big elephants, no, white elephant projects in Hong Kong. And they were talking about the, at the bills committee, they talked about how much more the government would be spending if we ever raise the sum of uh payment for maternity leave on a salary front, of course, from some thirty six thousand to eighty thousand. All the officials present at the time kept saying, no, 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 we need to be very scrupulous, very uh cautious about public spending. Uh we we just can't do it, we can't raise uh that uh monetary ceiling. But then, they suddenly did, almost completely out of the blue. They raised it, they more than doubled it to eighty thousand. Exactly what happened in between? We have no idea, although I did hear uh some Beijing stooge, some pro-Beijing Union type, uh the the said the something to the following effect yesterday, that, oh, uh the government, the minister in charge has finally listened to our recommendation that the uh the sum, the ceiling, should be raised to the present amount. So they took credit for it. Sounds so, nobody, nobody on the pro-democracy side has suggested anything. So what's that about? I wish this minister would be more morally, politically, and intellectually honest over this particular, I wouldn't call it fiasco, I was about to use that word, but this particular development. How about? That's very, very curious, because it's hugely hypocritical on the part of this government, that there could be political sleaziness involved. I have this very unfortunate impression. It might not have been fair, but that could have happened. And the the fact that the Mr. Tem also mentioned this miscarriage or the definition of pregnancy period issue. I wish that I can, well, as a mother, a mother of two, I wish I could make not a last-minute plea because however last-minute, it's not going to change anything. The fact is, uh they've made it better. It's now six months or twenty-four weeks. Now, not, I I knew it's supposed to be a scientific definition. But if you actually look into medical data, if you look at what pediatric, no, not pediatricians, gynecologists have to say about pregnancy. Miscarriage could could form such trauma to any expectant mothers. And the fact is, you can usually feel fetal movement as early as forty, sixteen weeks, meaning four months, not six months. As early as four months into the pregnancy, you could feel the baby. And if you lost it, the mental, the emotional trauma is just indescribable. It's just unthinkable. Could you not, if there's ever any review, raise it to four months instead of just six months? I have the gynecologist, the the specialist saying that when it comes to fetal movement, it could come as early as fourteen weeks. So you knew there's a life within you. And if it's gone, it's a life gone. So please, consider that next time, next time, right? It's far too late this time. It's not six months. It should be four months. If there's any humanitarian, almost like consideration over that. Now, another uh issue that is involved is about post-NATO blues. I had no intention of talking about it, but yesterday I heard some fairly ignorant, again, Beijing stooge from the other side talking about, oh, of course, uh we need more, uh we need to give more rest to our new mothers after birth uh because that could cure, or to that effect, he may not have used the word cure, but uh that would help with post-NATO blues or postpartum blues. Some people would just call it baby blues. Now, rest, of course, is good for anyone, whether you are pregnant, whether you are about to give birth, whether you have given birth, rest is good. But to suggest that the rest has anything to do with the post-NATO blues is all wrong. And I need to put it on the record that uh that was not appropriate statement. It sounds as though the longer you rest, uh the better you can fight off postpartum blues. That that's a myth. No, that's actually a fallacy. That's just wrong because post-NATO blues come with emotional, physical, and hormonal changes. And more often than not, you would uh get into depression over financial issues under your own roof. What if you just gave birth to a pair of twins or triplets, right?
May I remind Ms. Claudia Moe that we are now at the Committee of the whole Council to consider the amendments, the upper amendment for nineteen. You're not talking about this bill. You're talking about you more on the second reading. Please return to this.
Ignorant suggestions, the ignorance displayed was rather shocking. Okay, I just wanted to stress that post-NATO blues could involve uh the severe mood swings and you're getting prickly and anxious and everything. Okay, this is the final reading of our bill, which will become law, hopefully fairly soon. Uh they had to outsource the system, uh this I E T system development in order to expedite it. That's another good thing. Now, uh the official in charge has written online, he's some sort of a blogger as well, that this new bill will help with our birth rate, hopefully, because we're one of the top low-birth-rate communities in Hong Kong per capita, of course. And he, but then, uh if we look at the political uncertainty we're facing these days, I doubt how that's going to actually work. Hong Kong people at the moment are practically learning how to live legally. Because under this new law, everything could be so damn illegal according to this government, and people are emigrating, giving birth to children. That's completely ridiculous. Thank you.
Dr. Helle Wong. Chairman. On the amendments proposed by the secretary, was to increase the cap of the additional MLP from three thirty-six thousand, Andrew twenty-two, to eighty thousand dollars.
Well, I already touched on that in my previous remarks, and the Democratic Party support this amendment. While in the process, I found there's too many ridiculous things going on. I had originally moved, proposed amendments to have a review twelve months after implementation. This object by the government and ruled inadmissible by the chairman. Well, uh one more thing. Well, at the uh C S A C C Fernando Cheng also suggested to raise the MLP cap to a hundred thousand dollars and also passed by the panel. Well, Halkai Ming from F T U, who quit it as legal and become the undersecretary for labor, and the vice chair assumed the chairmanship, he should be the one moving the amendments. So why this proposal amendments that passed by the panel that propose raising the MLP from thirty-six thousand to around a hundred thousand? Why the government object to our proposed amendments? And the chairman also ruled it as inadmissible. While the government objected in most cases, while Dr. Helle Wong, my ruling has already been made. We're currently at the Committee of the whole Council, first return to this debate. You should not be commenting my rulings. Well, when you claim the administration, uh claim that we incur expenditure that is ruled inadmissible. Well, this ruling is based on the R O P. Have you accused me and claiming that the objective they would not uh allow these amendments? Well, you see that how many amendments that I allow for the appropriation bill? The government agreed to none of them. Well, if you want to uh comment my amendments, you can come to me personally. When your remarks violate R O P, I must point it out. Please continue. Which R O P am I reaching? The chairman's ruling is final. You're not uh denying that you're unwilling to admit this panel's proposed amendments. What's the amendment in violation of the R O P? Which clause, which section? Well, sir, I would like to explain to you in my office. How about we join a meeting and come to your office? Dr. Helle Wong. Have you not tried to, of course, I'm speaking.
Mr. Elena Wong. Chairman. Just now, I was talking about Dr. Fernando Jung's proposal to increase the cap to a hundred thousand dollars in the scrutiny. It was endorsed by the panel. The administration said that there will be an additional expenditure of twenty-eight million dollars. They opposed to this amendment. The president shared their views and rejected the amendment. What I was trying to say is that if the administration said that there will be an additional twenty-eight million dollars additional expenditure, and as a result, we should not be allowed to move the amendment, I find it strange that the administration would move an amendment on the same topic. That's ludicrous. If the adminis... Well, the administration said that they have listened to members' view. If that indeed is what's the case, if you indeed respect the Legislative Council, then you would not so quickly brush off our amendment on... But by saying that there will be additional expenditure. Of course, everything involves additional expenditure to varying degrees. If that is the reason, then nothing will be done here. You said that there will be a charging effect, but in the same breath, you contradicted yourself and mirror Dr. Fernando Jung's motion that was endorsed by the panel. Originally, the proposal was eighty percent of fifty thousand dollars, namely thirty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars as the cap. Now you propose to change it to eighty thousand. Of course, the Democratic Party is not going to oppose to the proposed increase in um cap. What we have a problem with is your contradictory approach. You want to increase it to thirty-six... From thirty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-two to eighty thousand. There will be additional expenditure. You can make the amendment and we can't? This is the executive hegemony I was talking about. The secretary said that they propose to increase the cap to eighty thousand dollars, which is quite high. And you said that it's higher than Singapore, Canada, meaning that we should not do anything else, we should not criticize it and simply endorse it. Let me clarify. Secretary, you're a scholar, so am I. Let's look at the facts. Singapore, Ca... And Canada are the places you've mentioned. I thank the Secretariat, the Research Division. On April eighteenth, twenty seventeen, they have supplied to Leggo um a research on selected jurisdictions on maternity leave. In Singapore and Canada, how many weeks do they offer as maternity leave? We've been fighting for a longer maternity leave. Now is fourteen days, but Singapore is sixteen weeks. The maternity leave pay in Singapore is a hundred percent. Now, I think, well, the bill is going to be passed, and we've been fighting tooth and nail about it. It's eighty percent. And how... And you have the cheek to use Singapore as an example?
The first two children in Singapore, while the maternity leave pay is shared between the employer, the government, and for children that follow the ML pay is fully borne by the government because they want to encourage childbirth, they are to counter um population aging. All right, Canada is even more laughable. According to information from the Secretariat in Canada, well, in this paper dated April twenty seventeen, Canada enjoys seventeen weeks of ML, whereas we are talking about uh raising it from ten to fourteen weeks in Hong Kong. And then subsequent to the release of the report, there have been changes in Canada, starting from the third of December twenty seventeen. Canada would allow women to choose the standard ML or the extended ML, and together, they can enjoy eighteen months, seventy-two weeks an effect. So you mentioned comparison of Canada and Singapore. How about South Korea? Yes, um they and their ML was shortened. After our amendment, we provide ninety-eight days, whereas in South Korea, it's only ninety days. But it's full pay ML. And we talk about four-fifths of the wages. So if you want to uh draw reference from other countries, there is a lot. Please do not uh blow your own trumpet when you raise the cap to eighty thousand. Mr. Quak, thank you. Chairman, I'd like to say then when um members... When a member calls a quorum, he is supposed to remain seated. And if he leaves the chamber, leading to abortion of the meeting, then he should be punished. Now, the burn with us members asked the Prostablishment Camp five times whether we intend to speak. In fact, we have all long sat here listening to the uh ludicrous remarks from the opposition camp before we decide to speak. Now, there are few ugly things in this matter. First, extension of the ML. We failed to set up a BC because of the impasse of the House Committee. So the Burn With Us members are not qualified to take part in this discussion because they held the position there was none of their business for the bill not to be passed. Mr. Quak, we had in councils and in committee, we should discuss the amendments. Please do not prolong the second reading debate. No, I'm not just... I'm not prolonging the second reading debates. I just want to remind members that they're not qualified to take part in this discussion, and yet they were so eager to speak and to move amendments. Isn't it strange? Secondly, every Burn With Us member stood up to say that the bill was in order and they supported it. And the reason why they moved this amendment is to make it uh a positive vetting procedure instead of a negative vetting procedure as proposed in the bill. They have moved something, they've introduced something to affect the discussion of the bill. I don't know why every time when we discuss a proposal involving the involving paternity leave or maternity leave, um Mr. Ray Chen would like to cite the example of Solomon, King Solomon. Now, we don't want King Solomon to cut the baby into half and see which mother would say no. I think the Burn With Us members are saying that they must have passed this amendment, even if the secretary intends to withdraw the bill, they don't care because this is not their baby. They don't care now because they would not enjoy ML, or actually, we won't. None of us will enjoy the ML here. I think they would rather risk losing this bill altogether. And the third ugly thing about this business is they didn't care whether the bill could be scrutinized by this council, but then they did not hesitate to claim credit. They talked about defining the definition or changing the definition of miscarriage. Isn't it ugly? And Helena Wong said that the government had never consulted the DP and therefore the passage of the bill had nothing to do with DP. She was honest. And then Fernando Jung talked as if he had credit in this raising the cap to eighty thousand because he proposed raising the cap to a hundred thousand. Because there could be no negotiation between the Pendem's and the government, whereas for the FDU, right from the start, we asked the administration to raise the cap, and finally, our proposal to make it eighteen thousand has been accepted by the government. It's as simple as that. Well, if the amendments are reasonable, of course, they're acceptable to the administration. Why can the administration raise the cap and not members? Well, Chairman, you invited Helena Wong to have a chat with you in your office. I don't know what issue would take up the invitation, but it's clearly set out in the basic law that there is the charging effect principle. All right. What are we going to do with this bill? We all want the bill to be passed as soon as possible. The Burn With Us members are arguing whether amendment to the bill should be by means of positive vetting or negative vetting. Mr. Ray Chen said that the government wanted speed. Therefore, it wanted negative vetting, but this is not the full picture. Fernando Jung said that if the amendment is not passed, that they will undermine the functions of the council. And Ray Chen said that if we do not support this amendment, we are surrendering to the government, although I don't know what he meant. Now, very clearly, the Pendem's are using this as a weapon to intimidate the government or to extort the government, and they say that this arrangement is against the separation of powers. In fact, in Hong Kong, as said by some members, we do not have the separation of powers. Neither thus the US or the UK have this. And this is an executive-led government, and we want security. The Burn With Us members said that they're going to veto all amendments from the government in the next term. And if we want something to initiate, to be initiated from the Opposition Camp, I don't think anything will come out of it because they will only focus on political bickering and how to revive our economy. I don't think that will be the focus of the next term. This is tragic. Anyway, the government has the initiative to move amendments so that this council has a chance to consider it, not to mention stalling by the Burn With Us members. And then Helena Wong talked about the paternity leave and how we said no to seven days. And she also talked about whether it should be three days or five days. Matthew Jung then threatened to withdraw the bill. And we should look at how the Burn With Us members voted. Well, they both supported three and five days of paternity leave because we all knew that if seven days could not be attained, then either three or five days would be acceptable. So they did not veto the three or five days, so they should not smear members who supported either three or five days as well. And two more points in response. Mr. Jimmy Tam said that we should pass the bill as soon as possible. Then the Prostablishment members should refrain from speaking unless passed the bill after Pendem's have spoken. I think this shows his hidden agenda. Now, he wanted to say that when Prostablishment members speak, we are filibustering. And when the Burn With Us members speak, they have something substantive to say. No, if you think that using these spacious argument, you can silence us. No, there are many acts to silence people. For instance, three newspapers cannot be distributed and linen walls are not allowed, so and so forth. So you have done a lot of silencing, but we must grasp the opportunity to let the community know the truth. Mr. Ray Chen said that since we have no objection to this bill, it should be passed as soon as possible so that everyone will be happy. But Mr. Ray Chen said that if we just consider uh the issue of votes, that would be too low level. But who are those who would like to steal the limelight in this council? They pretended to fall down. They're not Spiderman. They pretended to be one. They hold stinky bombs and stinky liquid, and isn't it very base? This is in response to comments by those members. Mr. Look Jong-hong.
Thank you. At committee stage, I'm going to assume a position as to whether amendment to clause six should be supported. Well, Dr. Fernando Jung proposed this amendment at a panel meeting. And Chairman of the Panel, Mr. Vincent Zheng, is moving this on behalf of the panel. We must make this very clear, otherwise the community may think that this is something coming from Mr. Vincent Zheng because Mr. Zheng, she wouldn't be as unwise as that. Now, when we fight for labor interest, we must have strategy, we must have wisdom, and we should know when to take and when to leave. And of course, we should not play with the rules of procedure. And it's tragic that this council has degraded into a circus or a zoo. This is really pathetic. Dr. Fernando Jung knows well that the original proposal from the government is the future amendments be passed by negative vetting. And Dr. Fernando Jung wants to make it positive by positive vetting. He talks as if he's trying to empower this council, and then this council will have more say. In fact, when it comes to labor rights, there is always room for improvement. Does that mean then by means of positive vetting or for amendments to come from members, the interests will be much better? Now. Does that mean then, by means of positive vetting or for amendments to come from members, the interests will be much better now? Fernando Jung has mentioned the constraints under Article seventy-four of the Basic Law a number of times, and I can read out to you for reference. Members of the S A L may introduce bills in accordance with provisions of this law and legal procedures. Bills which do not relate to public expenditure or political structure or the operation of the government may be introduced individually or jointly by members of the council. The written consent of the C E shall be required before bills relating to government policies are introduced.
In other words, there cannot be any charging effect or it cannot have anything to do with government policies. In other words, for paid maternity leave, yes, of course, it has to be extended because there is no reason why it should shorten. And inevitably, that would also include, that would also imply extra government spending. Of course, that may not be the case. Or it would also involve government policies, for example, population policy, childbirth policy, and so on and so forth. So invariably, we will have to have the consent of the administration or the president's consent before anything like that can be done. So on the face of it, it's very palatable to the ears, but then it's not implementable. So what's the purpose of doing this at all then? Okay? I think it is not very meaningful, but then what about the harms that can be done? Indeed, there might be harms. Well, when it comes to maternity leave, it's relatively simple because it's just about increasing or extending it. Either you increase the number of days or you increase the pay. So should it be four fifths? So it's very simple. So we can always go for the positive vetting procedure. Actually, there will still be room for this council to move amendment, that is twenty-eight plus twenty-one days for the amendments to be moved or even scrapping it. So it would not undermine this council's ability to amend it. In fact, for many subsidiary legislation and so on, that can be done. But then, if we were to adopt the positive vetting procedure, we could have the same situation as this year's. In other words, if there is a serious congestion for one reason or another. So touch wood. Once again, this council is once again attacked by the rioters or people might also resort to various tactics by hooks or by crooks. So whatever they do, they'll try to filibuster and drag you down. And as a result of that, nothing can be done about it. So there is a chance that even if we try to extend maternity leave, it might be blocked because of the congestion. So it might not have been any controversy to do with this piece of legislation, but then it might have to do with other pieces of legislation, and that once again will delay it. That's why I think adopting the negative vetting procedure to deal with such simple amendments would be better for the pregnant woman, pregnant women, or even the labor force as a whole. In fact, when it comes to fighting for labor's interests, we union leaders would understand this because the most important thing is the final straw, that is, we have to organize trade unions and we also have to be powerful so that we will be able to negotiate and bargain with the management so that we can reach a consensus and then the administration is willing to do it, then at least the employer side would not oppose it, or else they would also have a say in this council. Then we'll be able to shorten the whole process. Well, in doing so, we might say that there would be less room for the labor sector to steal the limelight. But then, we hope that the result can be obtained right away so that the stakeholders, that is the wage workers, will immediately benefit. We would not allow the hard-earned result to be well, every time on this table before this council, it would appear to be very nice so that we would challenge the administration. So it's like a test of our gut. For example, you might say that our amendments would be somewhat different from the original intention of the administration. Alright, you might try to fight this game. But then it's not something that we would be prepared to do because this is simply not in the interest of the workers. That's why I believe that strategy is the most important thing. What we are going for is the result rather than using this as a platform to stage a show. And we don't particularly like the idea that we can just do some gesturing because for the salaried workers, and on this occasion is about women's rights, would like to make progress. We don't want to see a situation whereby we would be bogged down by a lot of nitty-gritty and then in the end, nothing is gained. Because at the end of the day, we might not be able to achieve anything at all. That's the last that we'd like to see. And finally, my own experience is, well, the opposition camp just now claimed that because of this administration, because the chief executive is not universally elected, that's why it's not going to be accountable to the public. But then, why have we not had universal suffrage? That's because in twenty fifteen, the administration insisted on an election package which is against the basic law. That's the result of their Ben with me tactic. Had we had universal suffrage for the chief executive, then we would have a lot more confidence or greater confidence in promoting this. But then, when it comes to labor interests, things would have been a lot better. So when you try to put up political gesturing, trying to set a target at a very high point, in the end, nothing will be achieved. That's the reason why we are not in favor of the amendment so that everything will have to go through the positive vetting procedure that would apply to anything to do with improvements to maternity leave because we'd like to do it as soon as possible. Because the administration might have come up with this amendment, it would take time and would also have to consider the cost, the implications, and everything. So everything will take time, and that's the cost to be paid. And if we adopt the negative vetting procedure, it will be more expeditious. In fact, in the struggle between the administration and the business sector, once we can complete one subject, we can move on to the next because there are many things in the queue. For example, the seventeen-day standard public holiday day and so on and so forth. Well, they are also very urgent matters that we are fighting for. So we should not just take it slowly, and then there'll be nowhere to do it. So I think I've already spent all my time, and I just hope that it can be passed so that our women can benefit. Thank you. Mr. Vincent Cheng.
Thank you, Madam Deputy. After the second reading, on behalf of the Bills Committee, I move the amendment as I just set out. And I'm speaking now on my own behalf to share my views on the amendment. And also, with regard to the amendments moved by the Manpower Panel and the administration, I'd like to comment on them. I think the most important thing of this amendment is about clause four. That's the extension of the maternity leave from ten weeks to fourteen weeks. And thus, clause sixteen is also very important, that is for prenatal examination. So long as you can get the C O A, you will be eligible for sickness allowance. So I think that's the critical point about this. That is, in fact, it's been fifteen, fifty years since the last amendment. So the pay was increased from two-thirds to four-fifths. And then this is the second last week before the end of the session, and now we are finally able to increase it, to extend it. This is the most critical time, and therefore, through the passage of these amendments, we'd like to make some progress to this. Now, finally, my view on this. Well, at the Manpower Panel meeting, scrutinizing this bill in the later stage, well, some members also expressed their views on moving amendments. In the end, it's decided that the Bills Committee would be moving three amendments on behalf of the Bills Committee. And for the second and third amendments, the president already ruled that we would have to have the consent of the chief executive, including the half-yearly review and also including the annual review and also the cap to be increased from thirty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that was also ruled out of order by the president. But then, in the end, the cap was increased by the administration. So the only thing that was approved by the president was the second one, that was about changing the way to apply for the cap of the extra four weeks of M L P so that the cap can be changed by way of a positive vetting procedure instead of the negative vetting procedure as proposed by the administration. So that's to delete the reference to the secretary's motion that any resolution would have to be published in the Gazette by way of a negative vetting procedure. So well, we do have some reservation amongst some in the D A B concerning the positive vetting procedure because the consensus of adopting the negative vetting procedure was endorsed by the L A B because it was after a very long negotiation that it was finally agreed. And now, if we were to work on this again, it would be very time-consuming. And I believe that we will have to have a very long discussion at the plenary of the L A B before we would be able to agree. And that's also about the cap of the additional M L P. And therefore, I believe that the administration's proposal would be better. And under the existing system, I believe that the cap proposed by the Bills Committee might also not be passed in accordance with the rules of procedure. That's why I do have some reservation about the positive vetting procedure involving this. And the administration has also moved another amendment that's about the cap of the additional M L P. But then, it is not something that has been discussed by the Manpower Panel. The administration is now proposing to increase it to eighty thousand dollars. In fact, that was only after the scrutiny by the Manpower Panel, but then the administration has also taken on board the views of the members, that's to increase the cap from thirty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars to eighty thousand dollars. And that would mean that the maximum pay of the female workers would also be increased, and they will be eligible. And that would cover about ninety-nine percent of the working women's pay, and therefore, I think is acceptable. We hope that this piece of legislation can be enacted as soon as possible. What I'd like to say is that just now many members have commented on this, alright. The C S A is going to be moved by us. How come we do not want to give this power to the administration? In fact, Madam Deputy, I believe that I've spent most of the time in this chamber, so I'm one of the members who has spent the largest amount of time here. In fact, this is the second last meeting before the end of the session. We should not drag our feet any longer because if we should drag it any further, then it's going to be aborted and all the efforts will be wasted because we don't know when it can be submitted again. That's why we hope that there'll be no further delay. And I personally would also think that this amendment was also moved by us, moved by me. I've also thought about this time and again, and as I said, the premise is that I was in favor of the L A B's involvement, and I believe that the administration in the end would also adopt a more pragmatic approach in looking into this, and I believe that that's reasonable. But then, if the power is to be vested in this council, what I'm worried about is that in fact, during the past two weeks, I spent a lot of time here. And very often, for this malicious filibustering, I'm very worried about this. In fact, just half an hour ago, you can see what happened, okay? The Madam Deputy actually had a quarrel with one of the members, and then he made a quorum call, and then he just walked out. Ray Chen, what's the problem? A quorum call, please. Okay, Mr. Ray Chen is making a quorum call.
We have a quorum, meeting is resumed. Mr. Vincent Chang, please continue. Thank you, Madam Deputy. This is exactly a perfect example of how they stop others from expressing their views whilst they can do whatever they want. Well, Mr. Ray Chan asked that the pro-establishment camp can also address the council. But then when I did so, he just stood up and, well, please refrain from shouting from your seats, please. Please address the council and the president instead. I was here and I have been here for weeks and the Barwoodas faction just stood up and asked for a quorum call. As soon as they did that, they just took their hand back and just left the chamber. Well, they claimed to be very concerned about women's welfare and the maternity leave and they just tried to avoid the essential motions. Madam Deputy, we must pass the bill. This is a bill on maternity leave. We no longer trust the opposition camp. Well, Madam Deputy, you're also chair of the House Committee and you know for how long we had a standstill at the House Committee. Anyway, I'll save the speech. We only have this meeting and the next for the bill. I hope that we can take a serious stance and pass the bill as soon as possible. Do not put politics before the people because if the bill is not passed, the bill will be withdrawn. And just now, Mr. Ray Chan asked whether we would reluctantly vote against it. Of course, I support it. Mr. Ben Chan. Mr. Ben Chan is not here, Mr. Ray Chan. First of all, if there is a lack of quorum in this council, it is every member's right to ask for a quorum count. The quorum of the council is half of the total number of members here according to the basic law. We're now in committee of the whole council and after the loyalists supported the supported the change in the quorum, now we only need twenty members to form a quorum for this stage. And we don't even have twenty members here. Why don't you just scrap the requirement once and for all that there is no quorum needed? I need to speak again in response to the points raised by the two members of the FT, of the FTU. These are fallacies and distorted arguments. But let me first say that at this stage, we're here to debate the motion moved by Chair of the Panel that Mr. Vincent Chang on behalf of the panel, which was originally raised by Dr. Fernando Chao for the amendment of the cap to be made by positive vetting and by resolution instead of by notice publication Gazette. The pro-establishment camp may say, well, let's not put too fine a point on it. There isn't a very big difference between negative and positive vetting. We should not risk the government's withdrawal of the bill altogether at the end. If, if that's the argument, then I might reluctantly accept that. But then they're totally distorting the argument by saying that positive vetting is negative vetting is actually the safer way to go about it. What is meant by the safer way? Does it mean that we will only have twenty eight days and if we cannot extend the scrutiny period and complete the scrutiny, it means that the original measure will still be enforced without amendment. And even with extension of the scrutiny period, if we could not complete scrutiny of the resolution, then it will come into effect. Mr. Michael Look referred to the basic law. Again, he was mistaken. If an amendment brings about an apparent charging effect, so and so. And of course, he has the knowledge and it is impossible to amend the four fifths of daily average wages to full wages. And we cannot raise the number of days of ML. We all know that. So that's not really the bone of contention. The bone of contention is that previously a member proposed an annual review which seeks to consider whether the ML period should be amended and even that would cause a charging effect. It's not the case that we don't understand and we want to challenge the government and the basic law and we want to increase government spending. We all know, having experience at the budget debate, etc., that we cannot move any amendment that has a charging effect. We can't say no to the president's ruling and this has never happened before. However, some members from the pro-establishment camp claims that negative vetting is actually better than positive vetting. This is totally unacceptable to call it safe. Well, say if we veto an amendment in the next term, then it can be done whether or not it's negative or positive vetting. It has nothing to do with the composition of the council. If the composition remains the same and that is whether we have thirty five plus or fewer than thirty five, then even if a member moves an amendment and wants to veto an amendment, then the it, it will be as difficult.
Whether it is positive vetting or negative vetting, if the amendments do not get the support of the majority of members, we cannot achieve it. The difference is we may stand a better chance of having a little bit more time and more chance to speak. The pro-establishment members are saying they were trying to silence them. We're not silencing them. The only one who can silence us is the chairman. The, the president can impose thirty, twenty hours or for the resumption debate or eight hours for the CSAs. That is an act of silencing members. Here in this CSA committee stage, we can talk about this until the wee hours in the morning. And it seems to make it sound as if, that if we leave it a little bit longer, then there's the end of the world. Last week, we on Dragon Boat, Dragon Boat Festival, we didn't have any meeting. And it was said that we could have endorsed the bill in half a day. Now you must have got your projection wrong. How on earth can you enact the bill in half a day? There are many pro-establishment members who took the floor this morning and let's not talk about the, the, the fact that they're trying to get the limelight. It is a member's duty to speak. Even if you cannot change anything, you should also bring pressure to bear on the government. The government will not take the initiative to move any amendments, whether it is positive or negative vetting. The initiative lies very much in the government's court. In, in a in a game plan, they, they do have the right to serve and we don't have the right of the initiative ultimately lies with the government, even if we endorse this. The, the government will hold the, the initiative. Ms. Michael Look said that the amendments are not good enough. The amendment is proposed by the, by the committee. We had the majority support at the panel meeting. We have the pro-establishment members in the majority, otherwise Mr. Vincent Chang wouldn't, wouldn't have been elected as the chairman. Since this pro-establishment dominated panel would not object to the amendment. And they they probably choose to stay away and not vote in favor. If this is not a good amendment, why is it that they don't object to the amendment? And they can choose to move the amendment in a personal capacity. We did mention this at the Bills Committee. It may not make much of a difference whether it is moved in the committee's capacity or individual capacity. The pro-establishment members may object to the amendment. Now we're gonna have the, the bicameral voting. It may be futile. The same can be said about the maternity leave. Dr. Hanila Wong moved some amendments. They said that she's trying to seek the limelight. She moved the amendment knowing full well that she wouldn't get this through. If we do not move anything in the way of amendment, if we just accept whatever government gives us, we will not see an improvement. The government said that if endorsed, then the administration will withdraw the amendments or withdraw the bill. And then nobody in the pro-establishment camp would dare support this, other than the FTU. There are the members from the labor sector. I say this again, the pro-establishment or pro-business members should support the positive vetting. I think we should discuss in detail what are misgivings and how we can implement the proposal in a better way. I think they, they should support positive vetting. With regard to the bills, if we do it in the form of negative vetting, they're trying to limit you to twenty eight days. They will not bring this into force straight away. Even for the maternity leave, I don't think you will bring, bring it into force straight away. Maybe it will be effective for the first of January. So the scrutiny period will not make much of a difference whether it is twenty eight days, one month, two months. It will not make a blind bit of difference. So I don't understand the, the secretary's argument. Of course, with the negative vetting, they would have the initiative and with positive vetting, members will spend more time being critical of the government. With a longer scrutiny period, you don't have enough votes. And in the bicameral voting system, you simply cannot win. But why is it that the bill would hinge on the way in which we scrutinize the amendments? In this bill, if we endorse the, the proposal, the proposal will happen. Next time, if the government were to show us more generosity and offer longer maternity leave, it's a question of how we're going to move the amendments. It is a happy problem. We're talking about something into the future. You are saying that we should not get bogged down on something that's gonna happen in the future. We should not get in the way of the passage of the bill. I would find this acceptable. I like to speak once again because I don't like the government's attitude. They're trying to be too high-handed and if you're not with me, you're against me. This is a livelihood issue and they are being so auto-accretic. We're not talking about the separation of powers, the monitoring of the administration and so on. You have to remember that whether it is positive vetting or negative vetting, it will not make a blind bit of difference. The only thing is the length of time allowed for scrutiny and you're not prepared to let us more time, have more time for discussion. This is really infuriating. The, the pro-establishment members saying that it is good to have negative vetting and they're disarming themselves. You have the tool to monitor the government with and now you are surrendering your tool. And twenty eight days would be good enough. Finally, I'd like to respond to Mr. Kwai Kung. He said some members pretended to fall over. I'm not sure he, who he is. And he said some members pretended to follow her. I'm not sure he, who he's aiming this at. If he's talking about me on twenty seventh of July. Um I will be engaging in private prosecution against Mister Kwak. We will deal with this then. Doctor Helen Wong.